She's still out of her costume. Take you out of there.
Yeah, ten this year, that's right. Yeah, because I was at AC's house and I found it. I hope didn't have somebody crying, so.
It's a little stressed out. We know this year on the place will be a problem is they closed the water down for a whole week because events and stuff, many parts of our people were trying to work on a week early or two, like they're going to block our HGF. We had volatile spec.
They got a comb last night, thirty-four minutes.
Well, it was like, because the children, one of the children had a flu, so she was up here watching, so she didn't want to.
I knew it was going to get close that night. They had a little good ice, a little good ice.
I had to prepare, so I didn't want to come showing. I left late, so I left at twenty-two, I didn't go to my family's.
My body comb.
Yeah, well, we decided to get milk cow. I told everybody, we live in a large, we got it, we can sell it. So we had to build a house.
Okay, if I can have everyone's attention at six o'clock, and we'll call our March third, twenty-five, uh, regular, um, March meeting to order. Uh, this time I want to say welcome to our ladies from the Clinch Leadership Academy. Am I correct in that, ladies?
Yes.
And all three ladies are all in high school, juniors and seniors. How many juniors and seniors?
All juniors.
All juniors, okay. Got extended back to the junior class this year, where they have enough to go. And I was fortunate to go and talk to another day and enjoy the meeting with them. A really good group for this. Thank y'all, and that's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the Clint Development Party, I believe, which is what you're about. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Okay, um, let's take the stand, we'll have a real look at them. Let's pray. Father, once again, always thank you today, Lord, thank for the beauty of the day, Lord, and always ask you continue to bless this county in the way that only you can, Lord. And we just ask that you put your hand upon this county and help us to make decisions that we need to make, that makes it better for our citizens that lives here, Lord. I've always asked that you continue to think and protect our workers and be with them, guide them and direct them in all they do, put your safety, put your safety heads around them and keep them safe in all the things that they do. Now, Lord, just bless us as we go through the meetings we do, take and go through, just help us to go through the meeting and make the right decisions. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen. Next item on the agenda, the view and the doctrine of the agenda. I'll give you a few moments, you should have had that, should have came across electronically to you. Ms. Jackson, I'll let you have a chance to look down that and see if you have any questions or any additions that we might need to make to the agenda for tonight. I hear none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Like a motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I hear you none, although in favor, six five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Next item on the agenda is approval of the amendments from our last record meeting, February the third, twenty-twenty-five. You should have gotten those electronically also. Do I have a motion to approve the amendments as presented? Have a motion and a second. See how you want to do it, Pam, okay? And, um, any further discussion concerning the amendments? I hear you none, although in favor, six five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Under new business, first item on the agenda is the proposal for the Eagle Abandonation Solutions, and Sheriff Raymond Peters will be here to present that, or one of your representatives. Raymond, full of yours.
Problem we got is SmartCop. That's the computer software we use at this time. Since I've been in office, and even before I got in office, nine-one-ones complain about it, workers at the sheriff's departments complain about it. At the nine-one-one center, it crashes and they have to reboot, and they got to use speed and everything to get, and it says us, everybody else going to where there's a problem. So you putting the safety of citizens of Clint County at risk by not having a system that you can rely on. Right now, they have them to do two CADs, and the sheriff's departments have them use two computer softwares, because Superior Court Judge wants us to do one from the arrest booking, and SmartCop don't let you do it, and Eagle does. And right now, Eagle's solution is forty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. Well, each year, they're going to charge us seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars for support. SmartCop, right now, is costing us seventeen thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents a year. So we'll be saving right at six thousand dollars a year just by going to Eagle. We can use our computers, we don't got, we ain't got to buy no computers, ain't got to do nothing at the nine-one-one center. All we got to do is get them coming in, train us, put their software on our computers, and we can go from there.
Okay, if you're taking a look over, turn over the first page, I took and talked to, to Ms. Douglas, Kalina Douglas, at the nine-one-one center. I serve on that board, and y'all, we've had conversation at our nine-one-one meeting concerning SmartCop versus Eagle for four years. And, uh, and of course, at one time, everybody wanted to go to SmartCop, but it was expensive to do it, and so we wouldn't make the move. And right now, this time, everybody within our free county area works under Eagle, was exception of the sheriff's department, is that right?
That's true.
And what it does, it does cause a problem, as Raymond has already said, you have to use two CADs, and so in order for him to talk, them to talk to the sheriff's department, they have to go to one CAD, and don't ask me what CAD means, because I don't know, I'll make up something too.
This is a report, show them what's going on.
I called, I said it was a call assist device, is what I said.
That'd work.
Sandy, did you? Okay, I made that up. Bye-bye. And so anyhow, and then when they talk to the sheriff's office, then they have to turn and go back over to Eagle to take it, even talk to our people, our emergency people within the county. And, uh, it causes problems, but if you'll look down, you can see some of the things that are talked about here, two CADs, that one SmartCop is used only for Clint County, going on down to training, it's harmful for your employee to learn two different CADs.
As far as that goes, as far as a new employee, we can't even put them on the system. Mr. Charles Dial has to come and do that, and sometimes it takes two or three days. So they can't even do a report, answer a call, actually, unless they take a pencil and a piece of paper.
Okay. It's time to see if it takes five steps, a SmartCop to do what we can do with one step in the, in the original CAD, issues with SmartCop not working and freezing up, issues with SmartCop map that does not work correctly, main concern, that's the main concern, the map doesn't work for them out there correctly, and that's straight reported for the mapping for them to be able to get emergency personnel where they need to be at. Uh, here's, I didn't even read, I miss this, and this is part of those, we are only able to ping a phone from our original CAD map.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's important.
So Smart don't do, SmartCop don't do that, they have to go to their original one to do that.
And that, y'all, you know, I can tell you that is very, when Vanessa had her act, if it hadn't been for her, been able to ping that phone, we wouldn't know where she was in the map, she couldn't lay there for hours. Case numbers, we have, uh, we have to generate a case number for SmartCop, our original CAD, generates a case number at the time, the unit is dispatched. All dispatchers are in agreement for one CAD system, so we have full agreement, they won't all get back to Eagle, that makes it easier on everyone.
And just say, one of you walk into the sheriff's department and wants a report done, we can't get on there and do the report till we call nine-one-one and get them to give us a CAD number before we can even do the reports.
Okay. Y'all have any questions for Raymond? Anyone concerning this? Did you, did we mention the cost to go into that hall, did?
Yes.
What'd you say, each month, what, I mean, each year, six thousand?
Yes, about six thousand per year.
And of course, the original, for us to go back and buy the software and everything, you'll see, I'm out of the list, and your quote from Eagle, forty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars on one cent. That's what it's going to cost us to do there, and Jackson will try to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And, uh, so we got that figured out. It won't, we're not going to raise the budget at the top of it, so we're going to work within something, within the framework of the budget that we already have established. Okay, we have a motion to approve the proposal as presented. We have a second, a motion and a second, any further discussion? I hear you none, although in favor, six five, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you both.
Yes.
Appreciate you everybody. Uh, the next items, the two, the approval of the twenty-twenty-five agreement for the consulting services Atlas for Smith Road landfill monitoring, Jackson will talk to us on that?
Yes, this is our annual agreement, um, that we, uh, that we do every year with Atlas. There are landfill monitoring for the Smith Road landfill. The, I took a look at their fees, their rates per hour, because sometimes those vary every year, and it looks like the rates are staying the same. There was one increase, about ten dollars more an hour on one, um, position, and then a couple others went up five dollars an hour, so it all evened out. But we spend around thirty-five thousand a year to monitor that landfill, but it's something that we have to do.
We have no choice in that, and so if you want to figure that out over thirty years, y'all, that's almost a million dollars to close it up now.
How much longer are we obligated to do this?
I think about seven years, I think, from I saw the sign, there's on the sign, how many, how long it's been, it's thirty years, we have to do it thirty years.
But I've, I've asked about that, you know, because we're getting close to the thirty year mark, and they've said that really, as long as anything is detected, they won't recommend closing it, so there'll probably always be something detected.
Oh, it always going to be there. Because what you got, you got a company in the north that has all of it, and you got a company in the south that has it all. So it's pretty much a racket.
How many, how many will be contaminated now? Water?
Oh, I don't know. I have to look, I have to report.
We have nothing serious going on.
No.
Nothing, nothing serious going on, everything. Everything, everything's within compliance right now, but you know, they're still off the cognitive and the field stuff.
Yeah, the EPD has to come every, every year, and Stephen takes them out there, and they always actually bragging on how well we keep it up, so.
They do, they do a good job of that.
Yeah. That's why he's out of Jacksonville. He talks to the people and buys them.
I'll make the motion, it will.
Okay, we have a motion approved, item number two, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I hear you none, although in favor, six five, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Okay, item number three, Library Board Trustees Vacancy, Jackson?
Ms. Lorna Maddox resigned from the library board, and, um, her term was going to be through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. Ms. Jane Welch is willing to serve, and that's who the board would recommend we replace Ms. Maddox with.
Ms. Jane Welch, remember, I think she probably retired from being a library trustee, I'm pretty sure she did. I feel, I feel sure, I know she did, you know, so she's very well aware of the, of the library. Okay, do we have a motion approved, Jane?
Motion.
Have a motion, we have a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I hear you none, although in favor, six five, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Item number five, approval of the budget amendments. Jackson?
Oh, I think skip number four.
Four, skip four? Okay, yeah. Okay, that is a big one, I'll go to four. Review proposal for roof repairs on the county building, thank you for keeping this track. There you go, home, amen.
Well, we ran, uh, the add-on paper for a couple weeks, and I got one proposal, I had got, um, I'd had the same, the same person that submitted the bid this time had submitted one right at the beginning of the hurricane, um, and they said that the price that they gave me would stay the same as what was, what they quoted me a while back. I was just waiting on insurance. So, uh, the other, there was another company that, that gave me a quote back then as well, and I reached out to them and told them, you know, that we were officially bidding it out, because I had to adjust a couple things, um, for them to include in their package, and they never got back to me, so they never submitted one. So I only have one submit, and it was, um, Showtime Roofing Solutions.
How much was that total?
So they, so I told them, I've got it on page thirty-nine, this is the packet. It's, um, if we just, this would be, this would include replacing the courthouse roof, the pro date magistrate roof, the women's club roof, and then just repairing the sheriff's office roof, because it was just replaced. And then also, the Robbins Building has some, like, just, uh, fascia boarding that needs to be replaced. The total's eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. I also told them to quote me with a total roof replacement at the sheriff's office just to see, but it was, that would have, that would be a hundred and eleven thousand and ninety-eight dollars. So, um, uh, what we would, since our, since the price is obviously going to be more than the, the ACV value that the insurance is giving us back, um, the insurance can cut us a, they said that if it comes up be more than that, that they would do the recovery value, or replacement cost value, um, of seventy-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine. So we would, we should get that seventy-two thousand back from insurance, and the cost will be eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine. I don't know if y'all see the totals at the bottom of that spreadsheet.
So it actually costs us eight, eight thousand dollars from the county.
Right.
The price for it, y'all. He couldn't get me up there and talk about courthouse, and I ain't enough money to get me up there.
First is coming out of. Cool. Hold what down there? I seen it somewhere. Cool. We're in Florida. Oh, yeah, that's over there. Speed trap going all in.
That's what they say.
Couple times out of the year. We won't hold that against them.
It says we only have one bid, y'all, I think, pretty much, if we want to replace the roof in, it's pretty good price, pretty good, pretty good right there. I have a motion to approve the bid as presented. A motion and a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? I hear you none, although in favor, six five, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Pam, let's go back, approval of the budget, Miss Jackson.
Um, we just have a few, um, budget amendments that need to be approved, since we do the line item budget, anytime just a line item goes over, we have to do a budget amendment. So they're on page forty and thirty-one, so if y'all have any questions. There, um, it's the, there's some in the general fund, jail fund, um, American Rescue Fund, T's lost, and it's lost.
So what you're doing, you're making adjustments and then line items, what you're doing, and we're staying within the framework of what the original budget was as far as each part, is that correct?
That's right.
Make the motion, it will.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion concerning these proposals? I hear you none, although in favor, six five, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Okay, number six, debris removal not to exceed limit, page forty-two, Miss Jackson.
Okay, um, as y'all know, we finished picking up the debris on February the third. Our original not to exceed limit with the debris removal was four million dollars. And I knew we were getting close, but, um, they ended up exceeding the not to exceed limit in the end, um, but they didn't, they didn't tell me that they were about to or anything like that, which they're supposed to really according to their contract. So it's going to be over, uh, on page forty-three, I broke down what, what we've paid them so far is two point nine million, around two point nine million, and then we have left to pay them one point six eight million. So we're going to be over five hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Okay.
I spoke with our consultant that's helping us with the FEMA reimbursement, and they said that that does quite often happen, you know, sometimes if you, um, would just approach it as like a change order in like a contract, so, and they recommended, you know, me, of course, approve it on you guys to have it paid, um, and we should get it a hundred percent back.
A hundred percent reimbursed on this, so.
But we did get approved, we should be getting our two. Yeah. But we, um, we just got approved officially for the two and a half million expedited funds for half of what our estimate was, um, so we should be getting that check any day, but, yeah.
You're not paying an addition here?
No, I'm waiting until that two and a half million comes in.
You don't know if I ain't checked what the city, well, it's just county, y'all, this isn't the city of Humbleville. I don't know what city Humbleville, anybody know what the city of Humbleville was? I figured probably two million, when I saw it, it had to be two million.
They've never said officially in a meeting, so I don't know the exact number.
It had to be two million plus, that's what I'm thinking, so. Damage we had, what was it, the last one cleaned up, what was that, nine hundred and nine thousand? A million dollars last time, and that was including Humbleville.
Yeah, that's right.
And so, uh, nine hundred and nine thousand, same amount of dollars.
Yes.
So y'all can tell the damage, how much worse this past one was in the first, don't care to see anymore of this. I have a motion to approve, uh, the request here, not to see.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion, Tony, that's second, so. A motion and a second, any further discussion?
I would say that there's still a bunch of stuff people have not dragged out, you can imagine how much work we're doing if they had pulled it out of the corner.
And while you're saying that, we also have a lot of cleanups still to do on some of the roads, and we have ordered, you know, we ordered them sheets that go here yet.
It's supposed to be any day.
Any day now, I think they're supposed to come in, but we can get there and finish cleaning up these roads, and we still got a lot of work to do locally, whether from our manpower, and we'll just, that'll be on, that'll be on us, sir.
Well, um, we'll keep track of what all we do, and we'll, they have certain equipment rates for equipment, and we'll get that back, but it'll be seventy-five percent instead of like a hundred, but it's still.
If anybody's learned nothing.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Although in favor, six five, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Approved engineering agreement with statewide engineer for twenty-twenty-four, L-MIG, second round funding project, Jackson?
Yep, this is our engineering agreement for the twenty-twenty-four L-MIG second round funding topics that were, that did not require a match at all. Those are the ones that we came up with replacing pipe on, um, on any oak highway, Leonard Road and April Road. The cost to, um, for the engineers is around, is forty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. So this is just the, our engineering agreement with them, so that we just need to prove. I'll make the motion.
Have a motion, wrote a second. Second, any further discussion? I hear you none, although in favor, six five, say aye. Any opposed, a like sign. Give me an update, the piping is already being put down, they're getting about one a day, about what Stephen said, and then, uh, they're going to fill that in, and then when they get everything done, then they'll come back and pave everything at one time, and come back to pave them, where it'll be very nice, okay? Something that we drastically need, that money came in, very welcome. Okay, number eight, uh, approved engineering agreement with statewide, that's another one. Engineering for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, L-MIG project, Jackson?
This is the resurfacing of Chester Maddox Road, Leland Smith Road, and Carson Street. and Carson Street, Pocleberry and Locklear around the high school, plus the sidewalk. Um, this is the engineering agreement for that, and it's forty-five thousand and sixty-one dollars. It's always seven percent of the building.
Okay, uh, we have a motion from Deborah, we have a second, sir. A motion and a second. Any further discussion concerning this?
When will the Chester, I'm sorry, when will the Chester Maddox start with the bridge out at Any Arc? And that's, I mean, it's already kind of soon, will it?
They know. They, they still have to run the, run this in the paper for bids. So I did tell them that we were ready, we can go ahead and bid it out. Like, we, we have the money, so, um.
I'm saying, although that road, you know, the road's closed out earlier, so you'll have, you know, kids, people gonna be coming.
That shouldn't close, the repaving, the surf, that should not close, that road, Chester, that should not close.
I don't know, that's a bad road.
Any of, I agree with that, man, definitely. Aren't they doing, uh, they're fixing one of the pipes here on that road? Or, that's the industry.
That was doing, right?
Okay, that's, yeah, legal. We had to, we had to go do that one, right?
Yeah, we went ahead.
Uh, so we've got a motion and a second, I think. Although in favor, six of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Number nine, memorandum of standing for the housing authority for the FY twenty twenty-five community development block grant and the redevelopment fund grant for the Homerville Prison project.
I have them right here for you guys. And it's actually gonna be an intergovernmental agreement instead of an M W U. There you go. And I'll let Chad kind of go over it.
Hey, Mr. Chad.
This is an intergovernmental agreement between the counties, the Homerville Housing Authority. The agreement calls for a certain acres, nine point three one one acres to be beaded to the county. Um, where the, where the prison generally is. It's a total of sixteen acres, so they're gonna retain that, they're gonna retain that se- seven acres from, um, give or take. Um, the county is going to, uh, apply for a CB, C D B G grant and for a, um, for a redevelopment fund grant. And if those grants are received, the county is agreeing under this agreement to, to do, uh, disgestusification, demolition, cleaning up of the structures there, and to renovate one structure, and, and I think what we're calling it is a resource center. And so they say they need this agreement to, to move forward. It is a, it's an intergovernmental agreement, there is no end date on it. The, once the grants are received, it says H H A will be the county the property. And after that, I put in here, the responsibility is the Homerville Housing Authority is for all management and maintenance of the resource center. So y'all are essentially acting as a, a grant conduit and, um, a project manager while things are done. And after that, I think from what Jack and I said, at that point in time, it becomes the Homerville Housing Authority's to, to, to maintain it and to manage it. If it's, you never, if sometime in the future it's no longer used as a resource center, then the county is agreeing under this to deed it back to the Homerville Housing Authority. The Homerville Housing Authority is gonna take the remaining acreage and, um, they're going to, um, um, build affordable housing for low and moderate income families on it. And so that's all this fails out, it's pretty straightforward, pretty straightforward and simple.
Next is we're a physical agent and we're overseeing the property, pretty much.
That's right, and after that, it's a, it's a most progress.
It goes back to the housing authority.
Where are y'all on it? Y'all on it.
Ten years?
We haven't said, from what I've seen, it just says until it's no longer used as a resource center. But if y'all want, but ten years, we can.
I thought I saw it, ten, ten years somewhere, did I hear ten years somewhere?
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's the requirement, at least ten years.
Yeah, ten years, that's, you get about a housing authority, ten years.
Ten years, I'll make that change.
Y'all good with that? And we just have to do this, and of course, we're physical agent, what it comes down to. And we have to take that role and, and be over it. How much total grant?
Number, thank you.
One point three four?
Yes, it's a million.
One point three four million dollars, you know, to clean that up and get it back and it's gonna be, it's something that desperately needs to be done over here.
Excuse me, so if, if we have it for ten years, then are we under, under obligation of liability for anything that happened on there? How, then why don't we ditch it quicker? We don't need somebody suing us.
It's a ten year, we got to keep it ten years, you know?
That's the requirement in this grant.
Required me ten years.
Well, we just, well, it won't cost us that much to have liability to cover, to do that.
Will there be additional money for the insurance on that? For the extra liability or stuff like that, or you think?
It could be, but it's probably not much, but it could be.
We could, we could certainly look into the grant money and we can, there's probably some, some place that we could take and vote and move some money around in the grant to take in cover any insurance. So we're glad to have insurance on it anyhow, so.
That's right, yeah, I just.
So it's gonna have to be, you know, we're about to have some money or something with a couple of that.
We live in such a.
And grants, and grants should be able to do that.
We live in such a litigious society now. I always worry about my trips.
Okay, y'all heard the presentation, do I have a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion with the changes of having the ten years in there. And I'm still looking at the insurance, how much it'll be loaned to you. I'll say that.
Take a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hear you none, although in favor, six of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Item number ten, uh, contract with Glenn Gregory Associates for the FY twenty twenty-five community development block grant and redevelopment fund grant for the prison project.
He can see y'all, there's some stairs here, didn't he? Is that the same guy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Jack.
Okay, um.
Yeah, he's proposed, uh, uh, what's called an American Institute of Architects contract. And as you can imagine, that contract is written in favor of the architect in certain areas. What I've done not in great good way is I have made some changes about the legal language of that contract. And this, it's all about a page or a missing page and a half. Saying, saying that, that section struck in reads this way. So I, I have made most changes to that standardized document before in the past. I do think this, I think, I think, um, the commission needs to approve for the chairman and for the clerk to execute the document subject to us talking further with Mr. Gregory when he sees those changes. Some of them may be acceptable from a legal standpoint of a little back and forth, and some of them may not be. So, so we're taking his standard contract and I think it's about ten or fifteen changes on it. I don't find them to be significant. For instance, I think it uses the word endeavor in there, the architect shall endeavor. And of course, I changed it to architect shall, which is not, not endeavor, it's something, he shall.
I don't know what endeavor is.
Try, try to do. He don't try. Yeah.
Y'all hear what the motion is? The motion is that we were taking, um, hiring Glenn Gregory Associates, and you would give myself and Jack the authority to, to negotiate with him along with Chad. The final agreement with this, with the final approval consisted with what, with Chad, our attorney, telling us that's a good deal and in good shape. And if he refuses, then what we'll do, we'll just kill it and we'll come back here. And, uh, and go ahead and keep. And I hope you figure that one out for a second. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion, we have a second. Have a second, any further discussion? I hear you none, although in favor, six of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Okay, under old business, uh, approval of agreement of official administration between Prince County and the Southern District Regional Commission for FY twenty twenty-five for community development block grant and redevelopment fund grant for the prison project. Okay, Jack.
Okay. Um, yeah, this was on our, uh, agenda last month, but we tabled it until we could get the contract, the, the intergovernmental agreement with the housing authority in place. So, um, this is for the regional commission to do the grant administration for the project. It's fifty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars, but that is rea- that's reimbursable through the grant, the cost of that. You will get that back with the agreement.
So this is more or less supposed to pay them to, to write the grant and push it off through.
That's right.
And everyone's letting us know we need the intergovernmental agreement to move forward.
Have a, have a motion, we have a second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hear you none, although in favor, six of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. Hey, item number two, approval, proposal for T T L for phase one environmental assessment for the prison project.
Okay, well, this is also required for the grant application for the prison. Um, it's this, uh, environmental assessment, it costs thirty-seven hundred dollars. Um, that is not reimbursable. Um, that would be like, I guess, in kind, like a match sort of, as leverage. Um, that's right. Yeah, but, um, so.
So this is the very environmental assessment that they did.
It is.
So what is, y'all, we gonna be in for thirty-seven hundred dollars, but we gonna be getting, the county is a million and a half somewhere in the neighborhood, a million and a half, so that's a pretty good deal. I'd swap that to any day, no one could do that with me. And, do I have a motion, do we approve this?
No.
Have a second, a motion, say you keep them, that's what we can't work down the line there. Motion and a second, uh, any further, any further discussion? I hear you none, although in favor, six of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. And yes? Anything for the mistress? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion to adjourn, second, do I have a second? Motion and a second, all the favors, six of us saying aye. Thank y'all all for coming, you know, thank y'all for being here. Thanks for being with us.